Row call.
Mayor Conneball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Here.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst?
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham?
Here.
Thank you. First item of the business is to approve the amendments from the meeting on August 11th, 2015. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Any nos? Here none. Employee of the Month?
Mayor, I think Chief Schultz will have that this month. Generally, when we have an employee of the month, it's based on something spectacular they've done in the field of investigations or patrol. But this month, we were honored to recognize Jordan Douglas. Jordan came to me one day when he'd been on a call and told me about these two little girls that run an lemonade stand and they were trying to save up to buy this special little doll. And I could tell that he was moved when he came to me. And he said, "I've got to get them little girls that doll." And I said, "Well, son, do what you gotta do." And he said, "Well, I'm gonna order them the doll and I'm gonna tell their momma to tell them not to be hunting anymore, that I'll get the doll." And when he got the doll, he was able to take it to the little girls and told them that he had found somebody in the neighborhood wanting to know if they might recognize him. And then they immediately were tickled to death to find the little doll in the back of the car. And that's the kind of things that, you know, what we've always said for years, we're trying to put a new face on the Newport Police Department, want to shine a positive light. And those are the kind of things that show that we, as policemen, are not just law enforcement officers, we're not just those people that have to come when you got a problem, but we're also there just dealing with the general public daily. And Jordan having the heart that he has, he saw that those little girls truly wanted that and they were willing to put forth the effort to earn by selling lemonade the money to buy that doll. And Jordan, he's not well off, he's not somebody that could just go and buy them the doll and not think anything about it. He knew that he'd have to scrimp a little bit to get it, but it didn't bother him. It bothered him that he couldn't just make that right for those girls immediately, but he went right online, ordered the doll, brought it back to the little girls. And I don't know if y'all saw the report on Channel 8, we had a good little human interest story there. And those children were tickled to death. And Jordan did a fantastic job in presenting that to them in a way that they learned to love policemen and know policemen have got a good heart. Policemen are people too. And in this society that we're living in these days, I think you could do no better job than to have the children look up to us and know that we are people and that we are there to help them. And there are rewards in doing the right thing. So it's my honor to present this plaque to Jordan for the employee of the month for the month of September.
Amen.
The last time I'd had the opportunity to do this, I about took this part with me.
Watching Jordan.
You'll turn around so they can get one here.
Family photo, thank you.
That's good stuff, Jordan.
Yes, sir. Jordan, you don't get any better than that, buddy.
That's right.
And don't excuse you though, Ma'ees.
Just leaving the same. Okay, next is reports from City Administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have a whole lot this month, just to bring you up to speed on a couple of things. One, it's been handed out to y'all, a recycling report from the recycling department, but we plan on having that in your booklet. Dean actually got ahead of the game, I asked him to have it in there next month, because when I went out and met with him, we talked about recycling a lot at the last meet. And the next day, I went out and had a talk with Dean and to see exactly what the state of everything was. And what I found was that he didn't have a computer or anything out there. So we've got him, we're trying to get him set up with a computer where he can do this report. And so I anticipated starting this next month, but he actually brought it in today and wanted to hand it out and wanted me to look at it and review it. And I thought it looked good, and so he went ahead and handed it out for y'all. But this will be included in your book starting next month. Hopefully, we'll have him up and running out there with a computer and everything to where he can do this report without having to go down to the main office. Also, just a quick report, and he's here if you have any questions. What we found, and I've already reported this back to Mr. Fancher, but for everybody else, when we went back and looked at the website, there was a lot of information that was on there that was not readily visible when you first visited the site. There was a pull-down menu that you had to click on, and so we are working on making that more user-friendly. A lot of the information that Mr. Fancher talked about was actually on there, but it was not easy to navigate to. You had to take some time and kind of work to get to it. So we're gonna try to get that more user-friendly. And a lot of the things that were talked about as far as recycling materials, we do already take. It just wasn't, like I say, it wasn't on our user-friendly on the website. And we're gonna try to make the entire website more user-friendly. The Twitter account, we've got that up and running. I reported last time that Gary was gonna be doing that. And he's got that up and running, and I just wanted to publicize the address so folks can follow the city on that. And it is the @sunandcityofnewporttn. And of course, you have to have a Twitter account, you have to, you know, get signed up on Twitter to be able to follow that. But we've been putting some things out, not a whole lot to put out, but like when the road was closed up here, we got that on there. And so hopefully, you know, we'll be utilizing that more and more. And how many followers you got now, Gary?
We're over 100 now.
Okay, so people are signing up for it, but I wanted to take this opportunity to bring y'all up to speed, but also to get that address out there so more folks would know what to be following.
Hashtag Newport what?
It's the @, the @cityofnewporttn. I don't know, does the @ sign have a... I know the pound sign they call a hashtag, so do they call them all hashtags?
You just say @, you just say @Newport. If you just search Newport TN, it'll pop up.
Yeah. We have to search Newport on Twitter. So Newport.
The only Newport.
Newport on Twitter. Yeah.
We got another follower.
And that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Next item is consideration of appointment of board members of the Newport Utilities due to the resignation of Charlie Benson. That's an appointment that if the board decides to do that, you're the one that'll have to make that decision.
I was gonna throw something out, everybody do what they wanna do. It's been suggested that since we're trying to go down to five members that maybe not fill that position, you know, it's not like life or death whether you have to or don't have to. And it can be worked out, since we're going down to five, it might help us get to that process. And we've still got some good people left, but they understand that their term won't be long because it's just been so many months. That's just my opinion and feeling. Rest of them ain't here. Wanna fill it or not wanna fill it, see where we go, Mayor. We wanna fill it, we fill it, if don't, we won't.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Willie Green for that position.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion? Well, any other nominations?
Two years left on that, Mike?
Seventeen of April 2017.
Okay, all right.
I'm in the camp of serving on there with Mr. Gribble and Profit, going down to five, because I feel like five could do just as well as seven.
Like six.
And I don't think it bothers me about six, and I'm sure it could be worked out, is the voting. If something went three and three, who would be the deciding factor there? I don't know. Glenn, you got any input on how, if we went six board members and we didn't fill Charles today, how we'd break a tie if you had something going on that was, come up being three-three?
I couldn't tell you today. When we go to six members now or assign somebody to backfill that position for the months that are left? We're gonna get to six members eventually anyway, so we gotta deal with that, whether we deal with it now or two years from now. So I don't have an answer for how we break a tie.
What you suggest, I mean, you, some of the board members I've talked out there, I'd say it's not life or death, that you all or us even want, just tell us your feeling and we'll try to go for whatever you want. Because there's two or three good people, I'm not gonna think of Willie Green or Philip Gregg or anybody. I just, I mean, that's the one that talked to me, one of them talked to my counsel, and that don't matter. So whatever, if you wanna do or don't wanna do, it's in good shape.
I was just figuring, since it's April 17th, that's almost two years. So I'm in favor of going to five, but because it's a two-year hiatus, I know how long I'm gonna vote.
Well, and to answer your question about the tie, of course, each board uses Robert's Rules of Order. And a tie vote would be the same as a no vote. If a motion was made and there were three for and three against, the motion would not carry, so in effect, that would be a no vote on that motion. I mean, ties happen quite a bit. I mean, one of this council members could abstain. And of course, the mayor now has the opportunity to break a tie. But a lot of boards, there is no tiebreaker. Like, we have a very special charter tiebreaker, but usually, there is no tiebreaker. And a lot of times, ties occur, and when that happens, then the motion would not carry.
I think it's a lot of time to leave the position open, and I think if we have people that are willing to serve and they want to serve, we should let them serve. We've already agreed that at some point, it will be phased out, but I don't see the need to make a rush.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, or a nomination, I guess you should say. Do we have any other nominations?
Philip Gregg talked to me, but like I said, it'd be two good people, it's gonna have to make the floor down, I don't care who, either one of them could do the job. So just leave it really, if that's what the board wants to put one back on there, but just wait.
Are you wanting to nominate to agree?
Well, just leave it alone, I guess, you know. If you wanna do one, just do one. We're trying to get it down to what we said we'd do anyway, so we're gonna do it.
Okay, for Willie Green, do a row call, please. Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Next item in the report from the Tanner Preservation Alliance. Let's move to new business. Item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2015-10, amend the municipal offenses to add panhandling restrictions for the city of Newport.
Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2015-10, an ordinance to amend municipal offenses of the city of Newport to add panhandling restrictions to the city of Newport, Tennessee. I might add that this was, we used the city of Memphis to go by that we previously had reviewed and tweaked it to fit the city of Newport.
I'd suggest we approve this. I had a complaint just the other day that there were some panhandlers at one of the locations and they were up there trading dolls. I mean, it's a nuisance, they're holding up traffic, and that's my recommendation.
There's also a lady approached me who was getting money out of the National Bank of Tennessee, or the next Pizza Hut, and somebody walked up to her while she was at her car doing a transaction on ATM, so she was very alarmed.
People's coming in, some of the private businesses too, and asking for money. I was in a place the other day, and they'd just come off the interstate and went inside the business and started asking, so anyway, that's...
I make a motion, we accept this new ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I think it's a very solid ordinance.
Yeah, it is.
It's very detailish.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no? I hear none.
We'll have to have a public hearing in October.
Public hearings.
Not long yet.
I think this is gonna be a great tool to be able to do some things to slow that down a little bit. This year's the worst I've ever seen in all my years.
Yes.
I mean, it's just stayed saturated with them up on the Cosby Road, and they've even expanded out to 411. And same one is kind of rotating back and forth, that same guy. So this will allow us to deal with him, because he's made an occupation out of it.
Yeah.
And then there's some of them they have where they rotate, and one will stay a few hours and leave, and another one coming to stay, and you know.
Well, there was, I think, one at the main Walmart entrance, and then there was another one up at the other entrance, the same thing, so.
That's enough.
Okay, item B, consideration of rescheduling the October city council meeting. I've got a suggestion on that, and it does work with my counsel's schedule, October the 6th. That'll be about a month away since today's the 8th, if y'all would, if that'll work with everybody's schedule.
Tell them what that's for, Conne.
That's because the governor's conference is the three days, Monday, Tuesday, I think a Monday, Tuesday, and a Wednesday that we had, the second Tuesday meeting.
Yeah, we'll all be gone.
Okay, that's no conflict with anyone then, October 6th.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Item C is consideration of replacing a firefighter position.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination, nominate Stephen Fines. Are both people here that even under consideration, is there just one? I see Stephen.
Yes, sir.
Back here too.
Stephen's over there, Frank Shepherd's here, Stephen Fines.
Well, we've been into this before, and we always have, you know, we're two real good boys, two good people, anybody can do the job. But I had sort of committed myself to Stephen Fines last time, he's waited two or three times, sometimes things come up, we've had to change this the last two or three times. To me, Stephen's sort of way to this turn, we've got an opportunity maybe to help him, maybe we can help the other boy next time. So what I explained is, is good boys, good people, that's what makes it tough.
You made that a motion?
Yes.
I saved it.
Got a second. Any other, any other council members got any other suggestions?
We've told him, next time there was an open, he waited his chance.
Motion and a second, we got that. So all those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no? I hear none.
Welcome aboard. Hanging or okay with hanging?
Thank you, Council, for your consideration.
Appreciate that, Ed, we appreciate you.
Yes.
Item D is consideration of allocation of janitor position.
Mayor, I know you recall, the board probably does not, but for many years, we had a janitor that the city paid through the police department. And it was a part-time position, 20 hours a week, spent 10 hours at the police department and 10 hours at city hall. And that individual got an opportunity to move to the street department, or actually the sanitation department, and get a full-time job with benefits. And so the mayor came along with an excellent idea at the time, and that was to utilize ETHR workers for our janitorial services. And we've done that for about a year. And it worked out real well for a long time, but now, we're kind of at a standstill with it. We have been without a janitor for three weeks now, I think this is the third week. And what I would like to do, I would really like to go back to our old arrangement, to where we had a part-time janitor paid by the city. It gives us much more control. The ETHR workers, I mean, they've never been like, you know, rude or not do what we ask them to do, but they show up sometimes, and they don't have to call us, we just don't know, we don't know they're not coming, they just don't come, and we have no real control. And right now, we don't even have one. And we would just really like to go back to the old arrangement when we did the budget, because we had anticipated continuing to use the ETHR workers. We did not, we eliminated that position. So what I'm asking you all to do is to reestablish that position, and this time, let them, hire them through city hall, not the police department, but still be a part-time position to where they spend part of their time at the police department and part of their time at city hall. I would like to increase that from 20 hours to 24. And that would be, that way they could, that would give them, because really, at 10 hours each a week, there's a lot of foot traffic in both places, and I think 24 hours would help us maintain a good standard on the looks of the buildings. And it's, like I say, it'd be a 24-hour per week position, part-time, no benefits, at $10 an hour. And the old one was $9.99, so that's just rounding it up a penny to what it was originally. So, but that's what we're asking for.
Do we have a motion to approve that?
I make a motion, we approve that.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any other discussion? Do a row call on that, team, please. Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yeah.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. The staff currently, the staff has been trying to clean, staying after hours some, but that's kind of a burden to try to keep that going. And I appreciate their work doing that, but I hate to ask them to keep doing that. So I really appreciate it, thank you.
Item A is discussion of approval of bids over $5,000.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, or move that any bid over $5,000 must come before the council. That's without regard of whether it's under the state bidding system or whether it's under the federal bidding system.
I second that.
You said you were gonna, gonna call us every time anyway, is that correct?
Well, of course, there was, I guess, some confusion, but yeah, what I did after the last meeting, I asked the department heads, because I thought it was anytime we spend $5,000, I thought was what was said, so maybe I misunderstood, but at the department head meeting, I asked all the department heads that anytime they spend over $5,000 to be sure to call each of you and inform you of that. But now, Mr. Gribble said there, bids on, like something we're gonna buy, that would be a much, that rarely happens anyway. But now, we routinely spend over $5,000, because, I mean, the light bill's more than $5,000, you know. So that may have been a misunderstanding on our part.
What about, like, the fire department or police department, either one, had a part go out, especially on the fire trucks? Did they have the bi-part that was all by them?
Yeah, we don't, yeah, because we don't take bids on those either, that's what I'm saying. That's just when we spend, like, we had a...
We had to wait for the next meeting to...
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it's just on items we're buying, like a truck or something, we rarely do that without a bid anyway. That's extreme, that's rare, so that's not...
Thanks, along with the call.
I was talking about purchases, James, large purchases, like, that normally would come before the board, not your day-to-day operations, but any large purchase over $5,000.
Now, we rarely do that without a bid anyway.
They should do that anyway.
We rarely do that without a bid anyway. But we routinely spend over $5,000.
It's a council for approval. Like, if you buy off a federal contract, you can buy it, and we would, you'd have no obligation to bring it before the council. Is that correct?
That's the way it's been, yes.
Yes. Well, that's what I'm saying, I think any bid, it's $5,000 or more, that no matter, you know, if you put it out for bid, it's $5,000 or more, then I think it needs to come to the council.
And you pay a lot of places that didn't have, is there one place you could buy the part for anyway?
Yeah, on the parts, there's, you know, we don't bid those out, because a lot of those are dealer-only items. Like, you can only buy, there's no aftermarket, there's only one place you can buy them. So you don't have to bid anything out that, there's no, because there can be no competition. So you can only buy it from the one place. And so they don't, you know, you don't bid those kind of things out. And like the backhoe, that was one of the things that, when you all went with the one that was a little more expensive, that was one of the issues, because we had to take it all the way, the other one, we had to take all the way to Chattanooga to get things done for it. And the one that y'all went with is in Knoxville, so that's a dealer-only thing. Now, it's gonna cost you, of course, it'll be under warranty for a while, but then, when you start doing it on your own, it's gonna be more than $5,000. But you don't have to bid that out. Legally, you don't bid that out, because there's nobody to bid, other than the dealer. He's the only person that provides, that can provide you that part.
You usually bring sole source to us anyway. But, you know, what I'm not gonna mess is, say, the automobiles or anything, if you bought them off of a federal contract, it wouldn't be a bid, you'd just buy it, correct? If it was in the budget?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
If it was in the budget, and here, and I don't know...
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Then I think that it should come before council. I mean, you're gonna have plenty of time there to bring it, it's not something that's gonna be an emergency deal if you're buying.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay, all right.
I second that motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no?
No.
Want no?
No.
Okay, item A, discussion of the red lights on 2570 Cosby Highway.
Yes, I have a, if you pass this down, I have a letter here from Sutherland regarding the status of that light. One, they're gonna do a review of it.
Yes.
Under, like I said. And then, two, they say that it may, if they ever do away with that left-hand turn coming off 40, one of the only left-hand turns on 40, then that it would take that in, it would probably end up with a red light at that entrance end to the new 2570 from Carson Springs Road, because the road is swinging, they're gonna come by it, as you can see the way the department. I gotta just know, we don't have anything the first time, and then this is the second letter from Sutherland regarding that red light, but if you'll notice in there, they always throw in that there's a lot of highway projects pending, and, you know, they never seem to reach Newport, you know. They, I look at the, all of the work they've done in Marston over the last three or four years, it's phenomenal, crossroads and everything that they've put in, and we're starting getting it. I thought, well, we're gonna have to yell more, and I just appreciate Mr. Loris Ellison, who I introduced before. She walked up and down Carson Springs to get this signed, and we have over 6,000 people that utilize the Carson Springs Center up there a year. And, I mean, it stays booked, they're booked solid already this year, even through the week and on the weekends. And, you know, I don't know what time, I hope they're gonna do that at night sometime, because that seems to be the most dangerous time, when you have a large number of cars, 150, 200 cars coming down that road and out into there, and then, of course, you've got to school. And so that's, to get a red light... to get a red light, I don't want to become the red light man or any of the thing, but we've got some situations that are really dangerous. The one that Jeff had mentioned earlier, up at the Pizza Hut, and then this one, is a couple of the most dangerous places we've got. I just can't believe you could sit up there on the Cosby Road and watch that weaving in and out, and, you know, we've had one person killed up there that I know of, and because of the way, there's nothing to slow those folks down coming from the other direction, and there's some people that catch some pretty good speeds through there, trying to slide in and out of one of the fast food things, and I think we're gonna have that also as the new road develops. So, anyway, that's where we're at, and I guess Connie and I will continue our trust, maybe they'll get tired of listening to us and just say, hey, it'd be, rather than them burn up our time, maybe they'll go ahead and put a light up, but we sure need it, and...
Well, I did have her to include the report from Nathan Vatter's office, from the Page guy. They did the Pizza Hut in 2014, they're not going to do another study on it. This is not the first one they've done on Carson Springs Road, I had one or two, had them do one or two when I was the principal there. But, I hope they do put one there, you know, but, you know, once a red light goes up, then it is the city's responsibility to keep it up, we have to sign a contract.
Yeah.
So, you know, like, I've got a 210-page report on my computer that come with that one sheet, I didn't print it off, but, you know, they're going to do a traffic study on it, they'll get back with me and let me know what their findings are, then I'll get you all a copy of that.
Don't you find out they run out of money, too, two or three times, we've talked to them and asked them, they seem like they start this stuff and then they don't finish, you know, you look at how many places they've started, over toward the Greenwood Highway, the 411, the Cosby Highway, and just gets to the point, it just seemed like they're doing parts of it, and then just quit and say they're out of money, I mean, it's like maybe they finished something before they get...
But I think they're gonna finish 411, the problem they had there was, there was a big sinkhole went across the whole 4 lane, and they've got that fixed, and they're close to blacktop, and then they're not going to blacktop 2570 where all of the barrels are at, until they're ready to blacktop that, so they'll be in doing one continuous blacktopping job. I did check on that, because I thought they could go ahead and fix that, and free those barrels up, and take care of that mess, but that's not the way the state does it.
Yeah.
It's like running into a bottleneck down there anyway, even on them, the 411, 18-wheeler, you go down the 4 lane, and then you come up to the nowhere, back on the 2 lane with all that, look if I can make it work, but anyway, what it is, what it is, I guess.
You know, you've got, you know, I guess what bothers me, we're a poor county, and they should be trying to help some, I think it'd be something, but I don't know, y'all have probably been over and seen the road construction that they did over at Walder State, and that whole area in there.
That was mine.
Yeah, it's millions and millions of dollars, then I put up a $3 million bridge in, so they could go over to their, go over to the industrial park easier, and they've done that while we've been waiting. They haven't even put a bid out on the two bridges to go across French Broad or Pigeon Ford, there's no bids out on those. And I live on North Street, and a lot of people are, but North Street is, just in the morning and in the evenings, it's a horrible situation, I mean, they back up the Hermano's, and they back up all through town, and it's because all the people, the big trucks are coming out of the east side of Greenberg, coming down, and coming through residential area, is what that part of North Street amounts to, and, you know, I tell you, I spent a lot of time in Washington, and I tell you, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, if you don't have somebody up there fighting for you, I mean, if our Faison isn't, if Sutherland isn't, then we need to get somebody that'll be up there chewing them, because Green over in Marstown, he brings home the bacon for them, and we've got to do that, guys, we ain't never gonna have anything. I mean, they're getting it all around us, but we're not, we've got to trim some of that off, and whatever we have to do, that's what we need to do, it's writing letters, if it's sending out petitions, you know, that petition representing 384 votes for Sutherland and Faison, and the governor, that kind of get my attention, I hope it'll get theirs. There's other projects like that, that we need to do the same thing on, if we don't sit around, if we sit around and don't do anything or say anything, we ain't gonna get anything, long and short of it.
Take care of it. Let's move on to item 10, we got a bid to consider for kennel doors for the animal shelter, and they're included in your notebook.
Mayor, we only got one bid on that, so that's all we have for your consideration, it was the only bid that came in for you.
That's a move we accept.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
I'd also like to make a comment, Lisa Lehman, I've been out there with the animal shelter, I wanted to compliment you on the job you're doing, it's a lot of work going there, people don't realize that, but I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate what you do, thank you.
I thought you were going back a minute ago, is Sutherland, is he pro Newport, or is he looking out for home base, which is Marstown?
Well, I'm hoping that he's gonna look out, I was very disappointed in his response, but I'm gonna try another run at it in a different direction, and see if I can get a little better response, because, how many, I know a lot, how many people here, you know, that road was 321, was 411 when they started promising we was gonna get it, we don't have it yet, and how many years has it been that they promised that they'd do away with this left-hand turn off the interstate? I mean, boy, y'all have been out there, that's dangerous, because you got cars slowing down, and then cars moving over to speed up, and, you know, that needs to be done, and compared to the projects they're doing, they're out, but, you know, they, like Connie said, I talked to the guy at the state, when we were down there, and he said, we're out of money. Period. I mean, I don't even think they had money to stripe through town here, didn't we have to stripe that for them, Connie, I can't remember.
No, I think they striped.
Did they end up...
Yeah, they striped.
Well, when I was asking them about it, they said they didn't have any money, now, maybe they had enough to buy some paint, or...
And that puts these two red lights on a, what you can see now, and that's gonna synchronize with everything else, so, anyway.
You know, they're talking about billions of dollars of projects that are pending, that are ahead of projects here in Newport, and, man, I just, you know, I hate to think of what North Street's gonna look like if we continue. I mean, we have to put up barriers around our businesses to keep the big trucks that are coming through and making right turns, keep them taking the front off the buildings. I mean, how many times has that front been knocked off of, it's not always been East Tennessee Coffee, but it's the same thing over and over, and we put poles up and they flatten that, and, so now, we've got a, I guess it's a, I don't know what you call those...
Concrete barriers.
Concrete barriers, we've got that up, and, man, somebody knocked it almost into the door of East Tennessee Coffee the other day. I mean, you know, it's, you know, they're gonna have to, if we're, if they're gonna move slowly on that, then we're gonna have to take some action that will force them into doing something if we, you know, if we stop trucks that aren't local, that don't have local deliveries coming through here, what everyone else does, you know, send them back around somewhere else, but, it's...
Well, Mayor, based on your comments, and some of those too, about enforcement and maintenance, that's gonna fall back on us.
Yeah.
I think the obvious question I'd like to ask, the people in Carson Springs, I could be annexed into the city to help out with that, we're elected city officials to serve the city of Newport. I certainly am not, I'm not trying to be unsentimental to the situation, but, you know, we're in the process of getting our finances and everything straightened out, and I don't think people will take too kindly to us.
Well, but see, we annexed out the middle of that road, and that's why the responsibility, that red light's ours, ours, being the city of Newport.
I understand, I think there's a lot of stuff to consider, before we stick our neck up.
Comments from citizens? We have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no?